Good evening and welcome to the Selectments meeting for November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Please rise.
I have allegiance. One nation, the God, indivisible, liberty.
Welcome. This meeting is being broadcast over Zoom and also being recorded by our town administrator. Is anybody else recording the meeting? They see none. Dad, do you want to meet yourself? All right, first on the agenda, we have minutes. PM. At the minute, so I believe November first, right? They're not. Oh, she said me and number one. Want to share? No, it's not here. Okay. Put it over online. The only thing I thought was the, I mentioned the PM, how we described the Rick Green part. That I would just leave it. It was tabled to a future meeting. It really never came before the board.
Right, okay.
Other suggestions? I don't have any.
A motion to approve November first.
As amended. Second. Those in favor? I thank you. Hey, next on the agenda, we have the dog officer. Shelley, do we have the parties in attendance? They know, no, we still have a couple of minutes, so. You left the message, but you don't speak to them. You can hear the door just open, so. Shelley, let's give a minute because we did get into a little trouble going too fast of a meeting earlier. So. Yeah, so we'll just give it a little bit. Okay, let's just kick down to opioid funds, if you don't mind. Bob, give us a quick recap.
The opioid funds are going to be distributed by a law firm in Virginia over the next five years. The town is not receiving all that much. First year, I believe it's two hundred and fifty-four dollars. The Commonwealth encourages communities in a particular region to get together and come up with a plan to expend funds. In checking with other administrators in the region, other towns have significantly more in opioid distribution. And we're going to get together and we have to comply with the guidelines, meaning we have to expend the money in pursuit of some kind of opioid abatement program. So right now.
Nothing's happening, but we're going to get together and try and pull the money and come up with program that addresses the opioid problem.
Okay, so with such a limited amount at our disposal, it's better to treat it regionally. So we can play it together. Okay, makes sense. All right, appointment to Strategic Planning Committee. This came up last week. We talked about reaching out to the community. Further conversation I had with the school committee chair led to a rereading of the letter that was really intended for a member of our board to be appointed committee. As a focus, so. I throw it open to both you. Craig, you did serve on the Strategic Plan Committee. Don, you haven't really done anything for months. I'm wondering if you would like to take a shot at.
Oh, you know what? Golfing is gone for the year, so.
I'm not saying we had an email from your wife asking to get you out of the house before, but maybe it's here.
She keeps asking, where's the next meeting? Yeah, I'll be happy to do it.
I didn't take a motion to appoint Don Collins to the Strategic Planning Committee. Second. Our favor. You did vote yes?
Yes.
Yeah, you did. Okay, good man. Thank you. All right. We're at six oh six and like, doors are open, right?
Doors are open.
Okeydoke. Well.
What are these things on the bottom?
Did you?
Three and four.
I can't, I can't even read what three is.
It's three says.
No, AA reserve.
That must be action ambulance.
Thank you. Revenue. Like reading the monks from the thirteenth century, seriously? That was when Don was around. He could read.
It's extensive. And it'll be taken up Wednesday night at the meeting of the ambulance oversight committee.
This is the quarterly report.
Yes.
Okay. What about the rebate? We're getting fourteen thousand something rebate. How they gonna handle that?
I was asked how to handle it. I said, send us a check.
There's a meeting in the ambulance committee? When?
This was informally from the president of the company.
No, so when?
Wednesday night. Wednesday night.
Oh, no, I didn't. I just didn't see it posted in the calendar. That's all.
So they're gonna send a check. All about the money.
So we are going to receive some fourteen thousand and plus as a rebate from the operations last year.
Okay, okay. How do we leave it with the committee? In terms of.
I thought they were gonna meet and they were gonna set up. They're gonna pick a chairman, a vice chairman.
Right, but I mean, in terms of how do we meet it as the structure of the committee? Are they committee? If they haven't posted for a forty-eight hour notice, can they still have a meeting? It's not on the town website. No agenda posted. I'm guessing there's probably nothing outside.
Well, we agree that there would be.
A committee committee.
Bob was supposed to set up the meeting with them initially so they could form a chair.
Right. So.
I thought they had set a date at our last meeting when we decided.
Well, that's what I'm saying. He's saying the date is Wednesday.
That was Wednesday.
We haven't posted.
Six fifteen on Wednesday.
Yeah.
Posting now.
All right. Well, now, did you actually speak to, anybody speak to this guy, Larry? Get informed when we were meeting tonight about this? With all voicemail or? Where you spoken? Where you talking? All voice, of course. Okay, Shelley wants. Shelley, want to wander up and give us a recap? And turn your mic on, please. Name is your line? No. Turn your mic on so we can hear you. Shelley, thank you for coming in.
Welcome.
This is in reference to a dog concern, a different dog concern on Raymond Drive.
Yeah, two huskies that have been getting loose. I'll just give you the dates, May twenty-second, October twenty-second, October twenty-third, October twenty-fifth, twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, and November fourth.
Did they ever actually go home in October?
No, yeah, I haven't heard from him since. Since I told him we were gonna have a hearing, I haven't heard anything.
Don't play it, Don. Really, don't. So it does sound like they had a problem in May, which looked isolated at the time.
Yeah, just once. And now October has been ridiculous. And I think it was even before, it was other dates, too. I just didn't write down all the dates. These are the dates I was like on my messages with tech texting with Larry about his dogs.
So how did they get the dogs back on those other dates, the twenties? Did they come back or did the owner get them or?
The owner goes and gets them. Oh, the, yeah, one of the owners.
The one time the police officer got it, right?
Yeah, they tied him up down Martin Farms by the solar field and waited for the mother to come get them.
Whose dogs are they?
Larry Williams, he said, Junior, he owns one, and he said his sister owns the other. They live at the same house with their parents on Raymond Drive.
So in there. Sixty-six Raymond Drive.
Fifty-six.
Fifty-six. A closer to, obviously, the Allen Street end.
Yes.
And these dogs are showing up on Water and Row.
Oh, yeah. The gas station.
Wow.
They're getting around.
They dig under the fence. So when did you speak to Larry?
Every time I text him or call him. And he's usually at work. And he says that his sister lets him out, and then she refuses to go get them. But then if I call her, she goes and gets them.
So they dig under the fence. You don't have any? Do you know if they actually fix where they're digging or they just throw them back in the yard?
Said every time they go out, they dig another spot.
They really need to be leased.
Yeah, I told her, don't let them out together and stand out there and watch them. Why one goes out or walk with them with a leash.
Now, are they letting him out or run or they put him out in the backyard while they go to work or something like?
Oh, no, I think they're home. They just put them out.
Okay, so they need to, as Craig said, either put them on a leash or run or something like that.
Right, I've suggested that.
Have they been fined at all?
No.
What is the fine structure?
Twenty-five dollars and each additional one is fifty.
Okay. So you've got record of at least five, six incidences. Anything since the fourth?
No.
Oh.
Now, since I told them I was gonna ask for a hearing, no, I haven't heard anything.
Oh, that's pretty good. That's ten days. That's the longest run they've had in a while. No, seriously, maybe, maybe.
Was not the last one they've had. Longest time they haven't been loose.
True. That we know of.
And one night I called them, which was maybe two Fridays ago, and somebody had witnessed one be hit, was hit by a car. But he said it wasn't his dogs.
Okay.
But it was two huskies on the top of Raymond Drive.
Well, I guess that's, I guess that's my concern. Not only can there be a nuisance to the neighbors, but you know, one of those dogs is gonna get killed running across Allen Street or Wilburham Road.
Cause an accident.
Or cause an accident, or cause an accident. And, you know, as a, as a pet owner, you have to have some responsibility for this type of thing. So I don't know.
It sounds like there's some finger pointing there, too, right?
Yeah, well, I'm not interested in getting, I'm not interested in getting involved in any domestic dispute.
Right.
But, you know, it's about the dogs running loose in town and their safety. It's like, you know, like Greg says, you know, another, someone could swerve to miss them and crash into a tree.
Right, especially at that intersection coming all the way down.
But it is. I would say heartening that we don't have an incident since the fourth. Then you told them that you're taking it to the next level. I think we probably should put them on notice that this came to a hearing. And I think I'd suggest perhaps the board said, look, the next incident, we're starting the money. Yeah. And if the money doesn't stop it, we're coming back for the next step in our procedure. Right now, okay, you spoke to him, you laid down the law. Looks like they're taking some action. We're gonna.
They're not here.
They're not here tonight, but we'll put them on. I don't know if it's certified or you hand deliver it to the parents or something like that. If you're uncomfortable, we'll send an officer with you. If you want that, it's always available. Okay. But I think we need to formalize our response to them.
So we're gonna say you gotta keep them under your control.
Your control. And if you can't certify, if our animal control officer cannot certify the structure of your fence, they must be chained or on a run.
Right, right. Fines will be on soon.
On the next incident.
Next incident. And then the third thing is if it continues well.
We'll have another hearing, which will result in the next step.
Yeah, right.
You'll hear that, Shelley.
Yeah.
Okay, that letter will be ready for tomorrow.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Just have Pam call. And I'll come get the letter. Have Pam, Pam call me or.
Right.
Email me.
Okay, other things, all good?
Yeah.
Chickens, horses, cows, anything?
I'm just still waiting to go to Bebo's. I'm waiting till she says it's okay. I'm waiting for a text back to go check their fence.
Okay, right. Good. But no incidents, save hurt of. Right?
Okay.
Just relax them. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Cindy. You have the floor.
Come on up. Come on down.
Oh, you're dating yourself. You're Craig.
My husband Joe Galavani.
Long time. We'll see. How are you?
Retired now.
We're just tired. Not done.
So, um, what brings me here today is five thirty Glendale. And it's taxation status, which is the sixty-one B, open space and recreation. And I understand he just renewed it for another year, so it's good till twenty-three October. And as far as I know, I understand the town has not received a notice of withdrawal from sixty-one B. And I was wondering if you guys know anything about that, when that would happen? If, when you would expect it? Probably don't, right?
No.
Okay. Well. So neither of the other, like the Concom doesn't or the planning board. So when it is received, upon looking at this section nine of the Mass General laws, the chapter laws, I believe that it would be in the town's best interest to investigate and take action on the right of first refusal on this property. There's a lot of environmental benefits to keeping the land pristine. And, and they're just immense in light of climate change with just how many trees there are up there that minimize the erosion and the flooding that we know happens up there on the hillside ridgeline and also the Eastbrook preventing any type of damage to that as it's a cold water fishery. And also just preserving the extensive wildlife and vegetation. And I mean, we all know our town loves open space and it could even be designated to the Minnetoga Land Trust and many towns I've noticed have been exercising this option lately, the last couple of years. Including Hope Dale, Sherburne, East Hampton, Lynnfield and Worcester, I believe. So I just wanted to bring this to your attention and I believe that's about it.
Again, nothing has come before us at this point. I will say, in my experience, I think I've seen ten to fifteen of these come before the Board Selectmen. Don, you may have seen a couple in Cassidy or maybe one or two. And the town has never exercised its RFR. Now, I asked Bob. He's worked for, I don't know, fifteen, twenty towns and.
Well, there's always a, there's always a first time.
It could be, you know, with a, with a, again, it's all about what's the best interest for the town, et cetera.
Exactly.
You've had conversations with Doug or Doug Boyd, perhaps for CPA?
No, no, I have not, but that's the community preservation.
Right, I mean, is an open space type thing. If you talk about the land trust, then typically they go for CPC funding for the purchase, because I would have no idea what the value of the property would be.
Right, well, it was purchased for two fifty-five last year. And I would imagine you would get a fair market value appraisal by.
That's required, exactly.
And for fifty-three acres for two fifty or fifty, fifty to fifty-three for two fifty-five, that's a bargain for to keep that.
I would say, how much is developable, you know, that's, you know, may or be.
Yeah, exactly.
Like you said, there's quite a bit of wetlands that Don and I and Craig have watched some of the, the, the Concom things.
Yes.
They've talked about they've mapped off undevelopable, unusable parts for their purpose. I've done.
Right, true, yeah.
At least.
Yeah, a lot of it, they've been after.
Whatever, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
Which would mean only less than half would be developable, even if they were talking housing or something like that.
Right, right.
So, obviously, the concern would be if it wasn't for solar use and maybe it was like for a small subdivision. We're not making any more land, and it would be, it'd be restricting the opportunity for the town to grow in terms of like more housing. If we did that.
Well, I think, I think the place we are at now is that we know that the owner has an intent to do something other and keep it for open space and recreation.
Right.
And under the law, they have to notify us of that. And there's certain criteria they have from what I'm reading here, there's certain criteria to, and then we have thirty days to see if they meet that criteria.
Right.
And then we have a hundred and twenty days to get the status back, remember, and see if we want to do something with it. So I guess where I am with this is that when are we gonna get the notice of intent? I don't want to be in a position where they've gone to the planning board, the planning board's giving them permission, the you know, they spent, they've spent a lot of money going down the line. The town has spent a lot of money going down the line. And.
So this check for sixty-one B, it's not just intent to sell, this is what convert.
This is the conversion part, right? So, you know what I'm saying? I do, but I think you're right. When do we get that point? I think at this point, based on what Concom's doing, the opponent, if you will, is still at the point, is this a viable thing based on, they don't know what the restrictions are going to be. And I think, right, once they finally get their formal hearings, they might say, oh, this is more work than we thought. Let's not do that. We'll do a different thing. Convert it to housing, and then the town has another choice. Okay. Do we exercise sixty-one B to stop four or five homes being put in? And that might be a different question for the neighbor. We don't know.
Right, right.
And maybe we say, okay, the town will take the wetlands off your hands, protect them, but we're okay with building three houses in place of a racetrack. And that could be too.
Yep.
But I don't think, as Don said, we're not quite at that point yet.
Right, I, and.
We'll stay on top of it as we have been.
Yeah, and that's all I ask.
Sure.
Yeah.
And I think it's worthwhile investigating, you know, when the time comes.
Right. Like I say, we haven't done it yet. This is the first time for everything.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, that's my motto.
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, so we have the, any correspondence or selection reports. We did have the first senior senate building committee meeting last week. We have scheduled another one for the end of this month when we're gonna formalize a chair, et cetera, and keep moving forward.
I printed out that Becky sent over.
Right, right.
So I thought there's a lot of useful information.
It was, no, I got a copy, too. Other meetings? Or?
Water fishing tomorrow. Johnson.
I can nothing report. You saw, well, I got my report.
Yes, I made it with the ambulance committee.
Yes.
Okay.
Or the ambulance people.
Town administrator report.
Okay. Some of the managers and administrators in the region will decide to get together on September the ninth. This will be the first meeting of its kind. Just to exchange information. And talk about community problems.
How big a, we used to have a regional selectmen's meeting. How big a circle are you drawing this?
I think it for now, it's communities in Hampton County east of the Connecticut River. I think it includes Ludlow, Palmer, and maybe some of the smaller communities to our reach. As well as Long Meadow, Webber Head. Lots of.
Looking well.
I, we did this in Essex County. There's something going on in another community.
There is.
That you could learn from.
We did talk to Nick Bro and I talked to Carolyn about this. They would like to have a regional selectmen's meeting as well. So we want to put that on. Yeah, so we want to put that on the table for oh, gosh, probably January is the right time. Just quickly back to the board, we are scheduled the what you wanna call the budget kickoff, the State of the Union address, as we used to call it, for the first meeting in December, standard time. It'll be a a night of frivolity and fun.
The union's first meeting in December.
Yeah, I think the fifth. I think Pam was notifying the first, the State of the Union address, December fifth.
Yes.
Work with advisory on the papers to hand out for budget planning, et cetera. Other than that, I don't think we have, we have a tax work off, sorry. Tax variance, basically, set the tax rate next meeting. And Bob, you know, Bob, we want to report on the good email we got from Kelly as well. Or did you see it before you, when you got back?
No.
Okay.
Well, I know that we're all set for the tax rate. Tax rate is going to be but I did see, she probably has.
She confirmed the sixteen eighty-nine, but the bottom line is that the average house, house value, which is three something. Went up to roughly three something, basically a tax increase in your bill of sixty dollars in the average. Which for a town meeting that had an increase of gosh, four percent? Pretty reasonable increase, one percent. It was a one percent rate in the increase in the tax. Have a cup of coffee.
We had a meeting on November the ninth on dental insurance. Pam arranged that. In order for employees brought under coverage, at least ten have to sign on right now. There are only three. This would not be an obligation of the town. This would be please choose to affiliate with plans on their own. We only have three. We don't get to ten. I won't go through it. Also, Officer Mitty contacted me. He would like to be able to update the police department section of the town website. So I got him today, sent him up with a username and password. So they're going to be doing that. One of the first things that they're going to do is to take the what's on the town portion of the website, where you can call in or check in and provide your cell phone level, so that you will receive periodic notices. Kind of emergency information. And so that'll be on the police site as the same as it is on the town website.
Yeah. How many, question is, how many different departments in the town have their own website? I know the police do. I know the library do. Yeah. And is that unusual in towns?
I don't think it's unusual. I don't think it's a good idea, but.
Right, that's kind of where I'm going with it, yeah. Now, now that we have a pretty good site, that one didn't, maybe that was the thing, but now that we have a good site, you know.
I mean, one of the things we can do is simply put in connections. For example, with the school site. I don't think we would ever take them on to the town website. We could put in a link.
Well, that makes more sense. They're, they're separate. They're regional. Well, that makes more sense. They're, they're separate, they're regional. But. Um.
Um, also, uh, I wanna show this to residents as well. Uh, the. Well, as you can see, the next item is municipal vulnerability project. And. Uh. But up to.
Well, what's the?
Well, I put it on the website.
Okay.
It is access to another website. That residents will might have an interest in. Because it talks about the whole municipal vulnerability project.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, what the town has done so far to uh. Try to understand what might happen with climate change and what vulnerabilities we have to severe weather. So, there's a website now and I, I live on the town website. You're still sharing your desk. Okay. Well, I would, I would urge everyone to go to the website. Here's, here's the.
Yep.
Uh, also, um. The town of Ludlow and town of Hampton. Have jointly applied for seventy-two thousand three hundred forty-five dollars. Under the state's efficiency and regionalization program. Go under rate and and start off with a shared conservation agent.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we're making progress, and we have another meeting tomorrow. And uh. As long as the. Uh, Long Meadow Selectmen don't change their mind.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I think we're gonna go.
Thank you, Mr. Collins.
Uh. We have another meeting tomorrow. Website upgrade. I did send you today. Uh, message. From our website provider, which is City Plus. Uh, in the course of discussions that I had with them. About Audio I, to make our website fully handicapped.
Mm-hmm.
They said, well, have you considered? Uh, the premium website that we offer? And I said, no, we haven't. So then they sent me that whole list of towns that have it. And I just forwarded to the selectmen to take a look at.
Well, not shocking that they'd like to up charges, but how much more is it? And we'll review the other towns.
Twenty-nine thousand.
That's great.
Expensive.
That is pretty.
That would be, that would be the one-time charge and then forty-seven, I think forty-seven dollars a year after that.
Well, that's not back. Yeah.
Uh, we're in the twenty-something thousand two hundred or something like that, so. Thirty-five?
Yeah.
So.
Can you get a grant?
We get a grant to, to.
Um, Bob.
Do the upgrade.
Oh, but you get a staff member from Civic Plus to come here.
But here's, here's the direction that they're going in. They're trying to preempt Facebook. And they're trying to preempt these notification, uh, you know, the webinar of companies. By having sections of the website where you have virtually the same, where residents can exchange information. And as well as um, you know, the other piece. So, I don't know, I haven't, I haven't done enough looking, but uh, that's, that's a lot of money.
Hmm.
Uh. We did uh, did watch the webinar on Audio I, uh, and we're gonna go forward with that. Uh. Also, uh, we're going to be having a meeting with the, the east of the Connecticut River.
Oh, one second.
Uh, yes.
The Audio I, was there, wasn't there an upgrade charge for that too?
Yes.
How much is that?
Uh, thirty-five hundred.
Yeah.
I would say if this comes with an upgraded website, maybe that's beneficial. I didn't. Now they're offering deals as well, so, you know, this.
Fundling, sure.
Yeah. Uh, but the selectman had agreed in an earlier meeting that uh, we could go ahead.
Right, right, I didn't, I didn't know if we upgraded the website, if it would encompass that as well. Yeah.
When, when are we meeting with Grace? That's the.
To be determined, but I didn't speak with her and she said, let's have a meeting, then I said, send me some dates.
Yeah, I think. I know we just barely talked about that last week. And I don't think I was really read into what was happening here, like. If we get a little more background on that, I think, uh, and maybe. So notify it on the meeting as well.
So, I had a thought that we would. Because of all the hiking trails we have in town and all the. You can see I'm a great hiker, a lot of hiking, hiking trails through up and down.
Are they?
And, and, and the activities that we have, uh, recreational activity in that sense, I thought that we might have. A hike Hampton weekend or something.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, you know, to kinda, and it would help our local people who have, who have uh. Home occupation, along, you know, baking, and some people are making teas, selling teas and honeys and that kind of thing. And we could have like a. Almost a festival on one weekend.
Basically, community walk.
Yeah, community walk and hiking, you know, doing everything, you know, bit uh. Minnetoga Mountain and the Audubon Society have a lot of these things, so. I thought, well, why don't we talk to the east of the river chamber of commerce and see if they have any ideas about how this can get done. So we, this is just very preliminary, talking about a year from now.
Well, so, first off, spell Hammond, right, secondly.
We'll keep you.
We're not, we're not hiking Connecticut, are we?
No.
There's an event in Westbrook Field, uh. White Christmas, which is the day that we usually do our thing. But they have all of the locals open up their shops and the library is open, festive and all of that. And so it, it generates some traffic and people going in.
I mean, well, how's that different than like Long Meadow days? Yeah, when you have the two-day thing in the green, et cetera, or stuff like that.
Their own committees, like. Public events committees or something like that.
I'm sure.
Who's that?
Like Long Meadow or something.
Yeah, they.
Or a chamber of commerce.
Yeah, yeah, that's why we thought we'd talk to the east of the river chamber of commerce.
Well, I think you might be honest with them though there too, like you need that type of. Event organization in town to start from the beginning, especially with the big, big.
But I think, as Don said, you look at people who are at the trail end. Want parks to be involved, so the. The VFW.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, without an actual license, please.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll talk to them and see.
So let us know what that is, please.
And last thing, we did talk earlier about the. The needs or representative to veterans district.
Mm-hmm.
Uh.
And, and Rick is suggesting one of the selectmen.
He said unless uh someone else is willing to serve.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, unless we have a resident who has some background. I think they're probably, what he's probably saying is a veteran. Who is willing to serve.
Right.
And uh.
And this is not the administrator, this is not the administrator, this is not the VSO, this is just a rep to the board, basically.
So, so the district members meet a, a representative from each town in the district.
Correct.
Gets together monthly, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
And they oversee and manage. Veterans.
Right, and they come up with a budget, et cetera. Yeah, and we thank, Rick's been doing as he said, uh, Art Booth did it for a number of years as well. Uh, I know we talked one name forward, if we could. Just pick his brain for, you know, we could do it. But I really like the idea of a veteran being involved in. So. But, we'll speak to Ted and other veterans and see if they know a name. Almost, Don, you know someone, but just, nothing, we couldn't do it. But A, we wanna, I'm gonna say, spread the wealth, being on committees. But.
I think you should get someone up there, some vets, you know.
Exactly.
And then, like I said before, you know. I'm a veteran of many battles with my wife, but I don't think that counts.
Oh, he is.
That's wrong today.
I know it, oh, Floyd, I'll send you home. With your new committee appointment. Yeah, they need three times a week, isn't it, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Don, Bob, anything else?
No, no, as, as you know, Rick has.
But he will, you know.
Soon as we can.
Right.
And that's, that's.
We are also looking for a, somebody to volunteer for an associate member of the planning board. Hundreds of people watching the meeting tonight would like to put that out there. Sarah, please, thank you. And Dalton, thank you. And other than that, anything else to come before the board? See how quickly we do this.
I know.
Most of you.
Second.
It was a pause, I heard a pause.
We were debating it, who was gonna do it?